Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Danny Seaver.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this great country we live in, the state we live in, and the city of Hickory. Thank you for this blessing of being able to get together as citizens and plan the future. Be with us as we make decisions tonight. impart some of your wisdom to us to do the right things for all we can. Please look out for those who are in bad shape all around the world, could use some of those blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is always a business meeting occasion when we recognize and thank those people who have served us and volunteered. And also, as we know, we're going to have a new guard coming in. We have a great history following tourism in this city. And we appreciate all you've done. And some of them, none of you folks should go soon again, real quickly on another beat, in another way, okay? I'm calling the names of those that I know that read here, and they're going to get a chance to recognize anyone that's here from my call. If there were any names that we are reading, let me know. About one in every 200 people in Hickory show up on one of our boards in the mission. First of all, Business Development Commission. And who's saying a dick? Somebody get a dick for tonight. My loss. Do we have a man in here? I don't wish for you to be guys just storm over here. Oh, we've got an iPad back there. And you're a competitor? Yeah, he's a competitor. Dave Haste. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. If you're on Facebook, you might see this guy. He hopped off with a lot of politicians. No Jason Statham, you told him, right? And JC Hefty. Thank you, JC. And by the way, JC, well, Mike Holland represents the Citizens Advisory Committee. JC represents Recycling Advisory Board. And Thomas McBrayer represents Public Art Commission. You've heard his name before tonight, Bill McBrayer. Father of the guy who hopped off with a lot of politicians. If you want a phone number in Washington, call Thomas. Bill, thank you. And Bill, Bill is going to represent our city and county and the whole state as the newest member of the state wide community council. Thank you. Well deserved. Are there any other retiring commission members present? Okay. We have two. Come on up.
How are you doing, buddy?
Catherine Shaver, youth council. Are you a graduate from what school?
Saint Stephen's.
Graduated from Saint Stephen's. And where are you headed off in college? Go Halloween! And our intern is just graduated from Halloween, right?
Yes!
And Hickory guy, JR Mosson, was just named for second or third time to the All-American team for golf, the greatest golfer that ever played in West Carolina. Christopher Wilson, Historic Preservation Commission. Not present tonight, Steve Fulmer, Community Bureau's Neil Ordain, and Ray Service for Community Relations. Tom Dobbins, Historic Preservation, Kathy Ivey, Library Advisory Board. B. Yang, Tony Wood, Parks and Rec. Tim McGaughan, Public Housing Authority. Joseph Butler. Laura Velezgrass, Darren Barry and Ness, Jordan Hatch, Zach Armani, Marina Potowski, and Damon Beck. Is that it? This is Bird. Well, we've only made a busy hour. We're making a busy for business development.
Oh, he's not here, but we just missed him. Is that right? Yeah.
We have a volunteer who likes to speak.
This is for the...
Good!
Mr. Mayor, I've already talked to you, city council. I'm Dave Haste. I'm newly leaving the Business Development Committee. It was a real honor to serve on this. I was fortunate in being one of the people that helped to establish the committee about five years ago, because we saw a need for something a little more formal between, particularly the small business community and the city government. And I'll be happy to tell you that we leave it in better shape than we started it, since we didn't start with anything, and that the people that have taken our place are probably better positioned and better folks to carry it forward. Things like the branding initiative, the different, some of the grants that we've put forward, we've got to really thank the city council for putting some trust into this group, since it really was a new group. So, I wanted to thank you for that and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing, Mayor, when you left out, Thomas McBrayer is going to be a student at Appalachian State University this fall.
Go here's, okay, yeah. Also, I think the comment was made that the new people coming in might be better qualified to carry the torch. And I would disagree with that. I would say that they're in a better position because you guys have laid the groundwork. Every commission has left their responsibility better covered than it was when they started. We thank you. And our city, I believe, is in better shape today and better position than it was five years ago. Thank you, sir. An educational video by the Office of Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll call on Ms. Dana Kaminsky to present this video and tell you a little bit about the background of how it came to be and the fun that we had with the students putting this together.
Yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Crone. I appreciate being able to stand up here on behalf of the Office of Communications and present this video to you. As you're aware, I am the person to help us put together and run Neighborhood College for the city and the citizens. And through that process, we had some citizens ask questions after coming to city council meetings, some very valid questions, some very basic, some not so basic. And through those questions, we have been able to address them in our video. Let me go back a little bit. So, in the process of gathering these questions, I was thinking about how can I address these with people that really can read them and understand them, and we want to do it fun. So, we had a theme in mind, and we started to script it. But without the help of the people that helped be actors in this video, this would never have been possible. So, I'm very thankful, first of all, to the Leadership 2000 students. I don't know if any are here, but I know Sandy Fatheringham is here, and I don't know if Kim and Grace is here, but we appreciate their program. We had them for about a week through the week of June 15th, and they were some of our actors. Also, our city staff, some of them you'll see, and our city interns were fabulous in this. So, we did this in a fun way, and I can take credit for the thought, but I can't take credit for the amazing facial expressions that Melissa Lovelace, our wonderful intern, brought to this video, as well as, and you'll see, as well as Isabella Fongizou, who played our lovely mayor. She did a fabulous job playing you, Mr. Mayor, but all the students did a fabulous job. We just wanted to show you this. We're going to put this video out on YouTube and market it through our channels so people can be aware of it, but it was just making it more fun for people to find out how and why they should come to city council. So, all that lovely footage.
Have you ever been to a city council meeting? Have you ever thought about coming to a city council meeting? That maybe you're a little unsure of the protocol, maybe we're square, we're a six, maybe what goes on at these meetings. I understand, and those are very valid points and questions and things to think about. So, what we have done is put together a short video with the help of Leadership 2000 high school students, as well as our city interns and city staff, to help address those questions that you might have. So, hopefully after you watch this video, you will be comfortable with coming to a city council meeting.
Where can I find a meeting agenda?
The meeting agendas can be found on this table for every meeting. They can also be done at www.hickorync.gov the weekend beforehand.
Is what I'm wearing okay for a council meeting?
You look great. You can try anything to a city council meeting if all you do have on top, bottoms, and footwear.
Are there assigned seats, or can I sit anywhere?
There are not assigned seats here at city council, so you can sit in the back, or you can sit in the front like these fine citizens. Welcome to the Hickory City Council meeting. This is the time for prayer and for the religion.
Is you a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I motion.
Does anyone second the motion?
I second.
Are there any persons requesting to be heard?
This is the appropriate time for anyone wishing to speak to have signed up ahead of time, like City Clerk Debbie Miller. Which can be done here at the beginning of the city council, or ahead of time at the City Clerk's office at City Hall.
Now we will move on to reaffirmation and ratification of second readings and the consent agenda.
The reaffirmation and ratification of second readings is when an item was already on the agenda and approved by city council, and it has to have a second reading for the final approval. During this time, city council may change their votes, and so indicate on the second reading. This is something that the law mandates for specific items. The consent agenda includes recent items and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless a council member applies it.
So, when the consent agenda is repaid as long, does city council really know what they're approving? Because they voted on it pretty quickly.
That's a great question. I don't know. This council gets their agenda packet every Friday before a city council meeting, so it is their responsibility to know and understand that they are approving ahead of time. Now, Mr. Berry will present the city's annual budget for the public hearing. You may ask what a public hearing is. That's a great question. A public hearing is when the public can come talk for or against a project or presentation.
Ms. Shaw, I thought spoke present a departmental report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Carl and Mr. Berry. I am here tonight to do a departmental report on...
I have a question about the previous report.
Time now! This is not the appropriate time to ask a question at a city council meeting. The appropriate time is the right person requesting to be heard at the beginning of the meeting. Moving on to appointments to boards and commissions. If citizens want to get involved on a board and commission, there is an online application at www.hickorync.gov. Each board and commission has different terms and requirements, so contact any of your city council members as they're ready to get the conversation started. If council has someone to appoint, it will be done at this time during the meeting. This pretty much concludes the city council meeting. For any other items not on the agenda that will require council to go into closed session which regards economic development or personnel issues that are not public information, this meeting is adjourned. Now that you see this video, hopefully you have a better understanding of city council meetings. You can always get more information by calling 828-323-7400, or online at our website at www.hickorync.gov. You can also check out a city council meeting if you don't get to actually make it to the meeting, on our website, on our YouTube channel. The meetings are always planned for two weeks after each meeting. Also, we encourage you to make contact with your city council representative or the mayor at any time. They are willing to talk to you. And also, we look forward to seeing you at a future city council meeting. They are held the first and third Tuesday of the month at, here, the Joy and G. Whitehouse Municipal Building, which is 76 North Center Street, which is City Hall. Thank you.
I just have to say real quick that I am appreciative of the creativity of Melissa as well, and our staff, because they have helped put that together and come up with some of the facts that was in there. So, thank you.
Well, I can see this going viral. And Ms. Fitz, Ms. Fitz, the correct answer is yes, they know everything in that.
Good question.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 16?
Yes.
Motion by Zaggar Rowley, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Mayor, may I address item number 15, persons request...
Thank goodness we don't have buzzards at all in here. I am sorry, we have a person wishing to speak, Mr. Mark Faruk, 2080 Sixth Street Northwest.
My wife, Laura, and I respectively request that you indefinitely postpone approval of the plan to construct a secondary parking lot for Glen Hilton Park on the land contiguous to our home on Sixth Street Northwest. We believe there's been a serious lack of communication by the parties involved, and have felt that up until the past few days, the city has shown little concern or sensitivity for the negative impact this parking lot might have on the value and privacy of our 22-year-old home. On or about June 14, 2014, we arrived home from work to find an aerial picture of the lot with a handwritten note to the effect of, quote, "proposed parking lot, call with any questions," end quote. We called and left a message, but neither of us was contacted that day. The following evening, we arrived home from work and were shocked to see that the lot had already been cleared. We saw some men surveying the lot at that time, and we walked over. It was obvious that the clearing was well beyond the marking stakes. We were surprised to find out last week that some of the council members were completely unaware that approximately 2,000 square feet of our property had been cleared at that time. We'd been told that the lack of direct communication from the city was in large part due to the fact that we hired an attorney from Charlotte immediately after the lot was cleared, and that once attorneys are involved, correspondence usually occurs through them. We did not hire an attorney to sue the city of Hickory, but when we saw what had transpired without any forewarning, we felt we had to get legal advice on what the local laws were and what our rights were as property owners. We did not have any idea that it was within the city's right to construct a parking lot on a piece of land designated as residential. We find it difficult that anybody in our position wouldn't have done the same thing. A meeting was arranged and occurred on July 16, 2014, at the site, and included both attorneys and Mr. McLeod. At that time, no specific plans were laid out, but we were repeatedly assured that we would be kept closely apprised of all plans as they were developed, and the goal was to have the least impact on our property as possible, and no construction would be undertaken until we were satisfied. Following this meeting, there was no additional correspondence until we received a set of plans to review in April of this year. We provided concerns and feedback that were forwarded to Ms. Dula by our attorney, but her response did not address the specifics of our concerns, and we were never contacted directly by the city planners or by Mr. McLeod. The next time we became aware of any activity was two weeks ago, when we saw the article in the Hickory Daily Record that city council had approved a motion to accept a bid from a local contractor. At that point, we felt the city had failed to keep their promise of allowing a significant input into the final planning, and had chosen to create an adversarial relationship over this issue when it had previously been very amicable. We contacted our attorney, who recommended that we reach out directly to council members, at which point we contacted Ms. Patton. We met with Mr. McLeod and Mr. Miller last night, and several miscommunications and omissions were resolved, but there is still much that needs formalized and discussed prior to our acceptance of the current proposal. Much has happened to bring everyone to the table this past week, and it is still our desire to work with the city to find a resolution that is satisfactory to us all. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? We approved the regular June 16 minutes, right?
Yes.
I'll be it out of here. I will explain to the people here, for some reason, for some reason, item five, I don't know what it is. I believe that's one of the most, maybe the most important thing we have on the agenda. And I have overlooked that a dozen times. Okay. Motion to approve the special meeting of June 22.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Lael. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 25.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be removed from the second readings?
I would ask that item G be removed until the staff can work with the Faruks to come up with a plan that will protect their property for screening.
I'll second.
Motion by Patton, second, I believe, by Misner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to approve A through F.
Was there a motion to approve all the others, A through F?
I just asked.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Motion to approve A through F.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move be approved.
Second.
Motion by Misner, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of informational items for council. At your special meeting, you approved an economic development agreement with Blue Blood Hound, and we wanted to clarify that there was a date that needed to be changed in that contract. The date defined as the three-year period of time that Blue Blood would have to create the jobs that are required for the agreement actually needed to be the date of December 31, 2000, I'm sorry, June 23, 2018, instead of December 31, 2007. And so, we've listed there the different sections of that agreement that need to have the date changed so that they have a full three years from the time of the date you approved the incentive agreement to fulfill the obligations of the contract. Second informational item is a report of my travel, June 18 through the 21st, to Wilmington for the North Carolina City County Managers Association meeting. And that includes registration, hotel mileage, and parking costs, and meal reimbursement required for that, for me to attend that conference.
Departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Mr. Rodney Miller, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, to come to the podium. What we're going to ask you to do is, Mr. Miller explained in your consent agenda, you approved on first reading a budget amendment that we need to clean up some changes at the end of the fiscal year, and after he presents that, we would ask you to consider a second reading on that, so that we can have everything in order for the auditors and move forward with the audit.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Crone. As Mr. Berry mentioned, the item before you this evening is to appropriate revenue that was received from the Tourism Development Authority to repay the debt that city council entered into in August of last year to build the parking deck at the convention center. As you are aware, occupancy tax proceeds were pledged for that, and those are given to the city in the form of rental payments to repay that debt. The debt is with BB&amp;T, a term of 15 years of 2.94%. That payment became due and was paid in April of this year, 2015, yet an appropriation did not exist for that debt payment. As you're also aware, the annual budget ordinance is the legal document which allows staff to proceed with expenditures in a fiscal year. That ordinance expired as of June 30. So, the action tonight is to clean up the books, per se, but it will not fix the ordinance as of June 30 of last year. So, those of you on the audit committee will hear this item again from the city's, excuse me, from the city's external audit firm, Martin Sterns and Associates. And certainly, you can ask questions regarding that item, but that will be an audit finding as of June 30, because the city exceeded appropriations for that functional area of debt service at year end. This action does clean that up for future financial statements, but as the audit did expire on June 30, and that budget ordinance expired, that will be reflected in the city's annual audit. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I think it's important for people to understand this TDA rental payments pay the debt.
Yes, sir.
And the TDA rental comes from, principally from the occupancy tax, but also from operating revenues of the TDA and the convention center.
That's correct, both.
We're just a conduit. We and Conover own it.
Correct.
But we have taken on the responsibility of being the dispersing agent, and this is just an oversight, right?
Correct, it is. Likewise, you have an arrangement with Conover and the county for the expansion, done a number of years, to expand the convention center, also paid for with those rental payments and occupancy tax proceeds.
And we've always had a representative on the board who is of the TDA, who has been well advised of what was going on and what the sources of repayment were, and what the city's actual commitment is.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve the ordinance amendment.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. And I would like to say that as you drive down 40, and you see that activity going on over there in front of the convention center, it just gives you, it looks like a happening area, doesn't it? It looks like things are going on in Hickory, and together with all of the hotels, the new hotels that have been built in that area, I think it gives a great impression to passersby and visitors. Number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to come to the podium and present an item of the opportunity to purchase some property next to the Public Services facility.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor, members of council. This particular item is a request for offer to purchase approximately 0.89 acres adjacent to our existing Public Services Facility. This is actually funded out of last year's budget, and those monies are still there, so that money has, wasn't set aside in last year's budget. This is actually the offer to purchase. This came to us from Ms. Childers. The address is 1352 12th Avenue Northeast. Ms. Childers ran a business there... Ms. Childers ran a business there. Some of you know it as the Old Skate Rink in Highland. And of course, some of us know that Highland neighborhood would love to see that building disappear due to its age and structure, but there has been a viable business that's running that for years. She is getting out of the business she was in, and is looking to get rid of the property. So we've been talking over the years, but in this case, we were approached about a year ago about disevolving, and so we were looking to budget this. So what I'm showing you is, everything in yellow is essentially our public services facility. This is our main building, sort of the front entrance way. This is our existing fire station, water tower out there. The property that we're talking about is what's in red, so we're essentially on two sides of it. 12th Avenue is the north side of the property. What you really can't see from here is, this is sort of the creek run, so this cleans up the last parcel on that side for our, again, public services facility that's hopefully still there 50 years from now. But what we're, our intentions, there's two buildings on the property. This is what we all know as the Old Skate Rink building. We'll look to demolish and get rid of that one altogether. This is a metal building, about 10 years old, about 2,500 square feet, that we'll incorporate into our operations, use it to, we actually store some of our water and sewer and various things in the wintertime to keep it from freezing up for, we'll be able to open up another spot in our garage, that we won't utilize that at nighttime, hopefully is one idea. Couple ideas what we'll begin. We'll incorporate this in. Currently, our fence line sort of follows this. We'll incorporate that in our fence line and clean that building up from the 12th Avenue to Highland Neighborhood side. The offer is $100,000. The property is on the books for a little more than that, and we had an appraisal done in about a year ago, a little over a year ago. And again, appraisal was a little more than the tax value, so we're, this is a little less than tax value, realizing that we're buying something we're still had to spend a little bit of money on to demo. But, so we're sort of cleaning this corner up with a relationship to our complex for the future, hopefully getting an eyesore in the neighborhood out of the way at the same time, and would request your approval of the offer to purchase.
I move approval of the offer to purchase.
Second. Motion by Lael, second by Misner, any discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Next department report, I'll ask the city's Communications Director and Brand Manager, Ms. Mandy Pitts, to come to the podium and present Crafting Hickory.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Good evening, Mayor Wright, City Council, Mr. Crone, and yes, it's funny, going back to the video, I've been coming to city council meetings since 1993, so it was kind of comical that I said, "I have no idea what's on that," that content thing, so I'm glad you paid attention to that. We thought I'd add some humor. Crafting Hickory, this has been a process you asked us to embark on in the winter, when we were talking about the next steps of the bond and all the projects moving forward. And so we contracted with North Star, Destination Strategies, who helped us develop Life Well Crafted, and believe it or not, it is almost four years old. And our brand continues to be strong as we test it in different markets, and we hear back from other people that have invested in Hickory and people that have visited Hickory. So what is Crafting Hickory? We are not replacing the Life Well Crafted logo. This is an initiative under the Life Well Crafted brand. And as you know, we have a family of brands. We have the libraries, Parks and Recreation, Well Crafted. We also have, we were just talking about the convention center, meetings, Well Crafted. And then we have visitors, Well Crafted, and Well Treated. We also have the symphony, music, Well Crafted. So this is a family of brands with our youth council, as well as our community relations council. So this just is another logo that's just part of the family. And this Crafting Hickory initiative is really includes more than the bond. It includes the Dietrelack Memorial Park, it says moving forward, the Friends of Hickory Downtown Park, the future Kiwanis Citywide splash pad, that's in discussions. And of course, I know that we were going to have several civic and business partnership projects coming up, once all of these projects start coming along. So I've already mentioned that also. And it also includes projects we've been doing, like Operation No Vacancy, the entire Mill District, Community Appearance Landscape, great. So that all works together, and even adds an Inspiring Spaces Plan, and the community's campaign boosts Hickory. So are you ready to see the rendering? So what happened last week, we met with the chairs of the Bond Committee, and they narrowed down some logos to two. So this is option one, again, an initiative. And here's option two. Again, it stays with our brand, and it's really the verb. Life Well Crafted is the noun. So here we go. So what are your thoughts?
One.
One.
And that's the last option, so there.
Rest in peace.
Any other questions? Then I'll let you off the side.
Number five, the last time I saw it, it was five.
The Bond Committee narrowed it down to two.
Which one do they like?
It was split.
It was.
But I want you to remember that this is the look. A lot of times, we spend a lot of time thinking about the colors, and they are important, and the leaf, and how big words are, but really, it's about the initiative. We need to be focusing on, this is going to be the verb moving forward, and we don't need to get so worried about, in my opinion, in my experience, what I've learned from over the years, working with the brand, is we just need to make a decision and just really move forward the initiatives.
Number two looks dated. Number one is with it.
Number two, number two looks, it just looks so traditional for Hickory.
It is too, it's too traditional.
This is going to be fun.
Okay.
So I'm going to sit down while all of you are debating this. If you need anything else, let me know. I'll keep it right here.
I'll tell you, ever since I asked people how they felt about guns in the park, I said I'd never asked the audience.
Remember that.
But I'm going to take a chance and do it.
Can we phone a phone?
How many of you like number one?
You're on the other.
Oh.
Number two.
Does anybody count?
There's a few people who just don't care, it looks like. I think it's split. Okay, I'm going to count to three. Everybody close their eyes. We're just going to, here's your way we're going to do it, if everybody agrees.
Okay, I do want to bring up that this is kind of the artist kind of guy, just...
Well, that doesn't mean anything to them.
To me, it, I mean, he has that eye.
He has the eye.
Artists guys wearing no socks and tennis shoes.
No, no, those are not tennis, those are golf shoes.
Those are golf shoes.
Well, you're the mayor, trust a designer or an accountant.
You're the mayor, college.
I think you need to trust a designer in this room.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're just going to say, how many want number one? And we'll say, how many want number two? And whichever gets the most gets, okay? Is that fair enough?
That's a pretty novel way to do it.
We don't have to go through this stuff again, having a motion to...
That's a wonder he has the gavel.
You can never oversimplify.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we choose number one.
I'll second that.
So, okay, we got a motion to second. I'm not going to vote for it, but I made that one. All in favor of number one, raise your hand. Okay.
Gets it.
Well, two. It's number one. All right. Good design prevails. This will go by. Okay. Jeez. Ms. Childers, don't post that. Ms. Childers, please don't post that. Okay. Seriously, both of them are beautiful. Do we have any appointments to make?
I have one, I think, let's see. Yes. On the Historic Preservation Commission, I would like to appoint Mr. Ernie Seals as the Licensed Architect Representative.
Okay. We did, we appointed Lori Alala to the Business Development last time, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to appoint Cheryl Garnett and Ed Hansen to the Business Development Economic Development, Mr. Lael and others, I'm sorry, I want to talk to, I want to clarify the degree of interest in Mr. Gardner and Mr. Schufler before we pick one. I'd like to appoint Mr. Shofidy to Citizens Advisory. I'd like to appoint James Noggle to the Planning Commission. I'd like to appoint Angie Akok to Parks and Recreation Commission. Man, I'd say, I'd like to nominate Melinda Stripmater to the Public Art Commission. I'd like to nominate Matthew Falaw to Public Housing. I'd like to nominate Jeffrey Enders to Recycling Advisory Board. And the Youth Council has recommended appointment of Kyle Chang from Challenger High School to the Youth Council.
Did you, Oscar Vasquez for Catawba County?
I think that, I think that one needs to be held open right now.
Okay.
I'll be getting back to you on that one. Anybody have a nomination we approve these?
I move we approve this.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Misner, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. I do want to mention at this point that because of some dramatic changes being proposed by HUD, that I am going to probably recommend to this board that we expand the numbers of members of the board of the Public Housing Authority to get broader representation, and to ensure, just to ensure the best representation for the neediest people in Hickory that we can get. But that would require a resolution, and perhaps, we don't, we're not sure at this point, but perhaps, perhaps a change in the state statute regarding Hickory's Public Housing Authority. So it's not as simple as it might sound, but it's probable that I will be proposing that.
How many seats are on that board now?
Right now, there are seven. Six are filled after this appointment tonight. One is held by a tenant representative, and the existing tenant representative is not physically in a position to hold that seat. So we're going to have to find another tenant representative, and then we're probably going to expand it beyond that. Any petitions and requests? Any matters not on the agenda?
I was wondering if I could speak with the, what you thought about adding more bus lines in this housing project or in an area that there weren't a bus lines.
I don't like to have to do this, but I'm going to have to ask you to do that at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you. It's just that we've had, in many other meetings, we have people at the end say, "I wish I'd have said such and such, and I wish I'd have done this." And you can get into situations where I would say, "Okay, you can do this, but I previously turned other people down." Just because...
Needs to sign in.
Well, they don't have to sign in. There's no requirement for this, but if you recall, if you recall, after we had this individual speak, I asked if anybody else used to speak. I am very, I am sorry, and that's not directed at you, it's the process. The process, I gotta blame it on the process. I don't think anybody would call Mrs. Hammer, Ms. Hammer, doctor. Doctor, doctor Ms. Hammer. Okay. General comments? Well, I'm going to jump right out there. Congratulations, Mr. Berry.
Grandpa Berry.
When we celebrated your birthday, when?
June 17th.
50 years old, June 17?
51. I just look like I'm 75. Yeah, 51.
I thought you said 50.
Obviously, you didn't get a razor for your birthday.
I see grandpa look.
So I can just see, I can see him at 71, and that young gal who was playing the mayor, she'll be up here beating the gal. "Mr. Berry."
Thank you.
He'll be announcing a break right in time.
That's right.
Okay.
I have one comment. I would like to have an update for the recycling, now that everybody's got their blue bins and stuff. I just realized we've gone from everything in the green to everything in the blue, and I'd love to hear a number of what's really being taken, or taken, not being put into the landfill. It must be tremendous if our house has anything to go by.
Yeah, we might want to wait a few months, because I mean, the rollout took a while, and give it, give everybody a while to kind of get in the groove, but we will do that, absolutely.
Great, thank you. I think it's a great, great thing.
I noticed one out in my neighborhood today, which is not the pickup day. Also, I've got one to show you here. I was sorting recycling and petting my feet.
That is not a workers' comp claim, by the way.
It would be nice.
Recycling is here to stay.
It would be nice if we had to pick up the recycling every week and the other, every other week.
Vice versa.
Vice versa. Now, the recycling, if we could get that every week, if we're putting that much...
So maybe we shouldn't have a report to council on this.
Well, you know, the recycle bins are those great big blue ones, and they have to be stacked, they have to be set aside, yeah, out five feet apart. So they look like sentinels, centuries or whatever. My dog doesn't want to go outside with the recycling.
He'll get used to it.
I have some general comments if we're to that point, Mayor. You go first, you just let me know.
Oh, you did, yes, a general comment?
I just wanted to introduce some folks.
Oh, great. Well, I want to mention that we're going, Mr. Zagaroli, Mr. Guest and I, and anybody else who can and wishes, will be joining Mrs. Sarat and Mr. Berry on Thursday in Washington to lobby for the $22 million tiger grant that we think we are darn well entitled to. So we're going to be up there asking our, earlier this, today, I mentioned, our representatives and senators, our representatives and senators, we're going to ask for them to help us get that grant. And think what that would do on top of what we've already accumulated through tax credits, grants, donations, private investment, and $40 million bond issue. What can we do for Hickory with another $22 million?
Thank you. Want to introduce some folks we've got with us. Want to introduce Will Sigmund, who's an ASU student, and he's spending some time with us this summer. And next to him is Bradley Setzer, who's in his third year of law school at Wake Forest University. He's spending some time with Ms. Arnita Dula. And then in front of him is Paul Wood, who is a St. Stevens High School senior, a rising senior. Happy to have him with us. We met Melissa in the video. She's already gone, okay, so and she's at Western Carolina, and she's interning in the Communications Office. And then finally, want to introduce Ms. Sarah Green. Sarah, if you want to stand up for just a second and wave to everybody, this is the city's new library director. We hired her from Caldwell County, where she had served as a library director, so we're excited to have Sarah join us.
And you talk about somebody leaving something in good shape. The library, okay. And I'm sure you're going to take it to another level. Thank you. Anything else?
Mayor, I would, if that concludes the general comments, I would ask a motion to go into closed session briefly to discuss settlement of two matters of litigation having to do with the airport. The first one is AGI Associates LLC versus the City of Hickory. The first one is AGI Associates LLC versus the City of Hickory, and that is a federal case, and that is 5:11-CV-61-RLV, and that's pending in the United States District Court for the Western District. And the other matter is a judgment action that has been filed by the City of Hickory in Burke County regarding the, what is known as the Moose Hanger at the airport, and that's As council knows, there was mediation conducted yesterday that was very lengthy. We have a proposed settlement agreement and resolution for discussion in closed session, and then I would request council to return to open session and consider approving terms of settlement and the resolution that approves the terms of settlement.
I move. Motion by Wright, second by Seaver, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
We will return to conducting further business. Thank you all for being here, and we probably will come back and conduct some business. Thank you for all the minutes.